Here there's more snow in the mountains, that's good for. That's good for a lot of issues, so Doug Riggs on behalf of the county and appreciate the time here. I ski as well, so unfortunately I usually skate in meadows instead of bachelor. So not nearly as nice as bachelor, but anytime there's lots of snow in the mountains, I'm happy. Plus it's good for stream flows and irrigation districts and municipalities and counties and. Fish restoration, so I'm all for snow. It's great. Quick update, this is the end of week eight, which means we're almost twenty-five percent done. From a practical standpoint, the most important thing is that next Friday is the deadline for posting work sessions on bills. So if a hearing and a work session is not posted on a bill, for the most part, those bills will be not moving ahead. Exceptions include bills in the joint committees, so Joint Transportation Committee. You know, Joint Tax Credits Committee, committees like the Rules Committee and the Ways and Means Committee. Don't have those deadlines, but for the most part, probably eighty percent of the bills are in committees that will be facing those deadlines next week. So after next week, we'll be able to calculate which of these bills on our tracking list are likely to live and likely or likely to die. And there, if you look through them, you'll see a lot of them have had either no public hearing or public hearing, no scheduled work session. So the list will shrink quite a bit after next week. I would say that the mood of the building is still pretty good. Moving and we'll go into one of them here in a second. Bills are kind of proceeding slowly on the floor in the Senate, the Senate is still requiring the bills be read, and so they've got. Rita, who's the reader, Rita the reader is a computer system that reads all the bills. They can turn up the speed if they want to, or they can turn down the speed, they've experimented with the speed, kind of entertaining to listen to. The computer reading the bills and some of the terminology in bills isn't always recognized by automatic computerized readers. So it's kind of interesting to see the pronunciation that Rita comes up with sometimes. But that certainly slowed down the process of going through bills, and so bills are are waiting in the queue for five, six, seven, eight days. On the Senate floor before they get read, it'll really be a crunch here in three or four weeks after the work sessions have been completed. So things will slow down pretty much in the Senate. They're not requiring reading in the House for the most part, although they have required a couple of bills be read. But as I said, I think it's still a pretty good mood in the building, people are happy to be back in person. There's a lot of conversations going on, it's a lot easier to track from my perspective, what's happening. And we're talking to AOC and AOC MHP and other groups pretty much on a daily basis, so. Give that update. On our, so one of our main priorities, Senate Bill six forty-four, we've been working. Very closely with the agency and with the committee on an amendment, six forty-four, just as a refresher, is the bill to allow. ADUs in rural areas covered by wildfire mapping to proceed. Under, and the amendment says under current agency hardening standards until or if. The state comes up with mapping for the wildfire system at some point in the future. We started with a dash one, quickly moved to a dash two amendment, and now we're at a dash four amendment. Peter has been engaged in that process and we've been keeping a close eye on it, it's mainly been a technical discussion. How do we get the amendment drafted correctly so it doesn't become obsolete? At some future point when the agency redoes the rules, for instance, on sections governing hardening. So I think we're there, we're at a dash four amendment. Work session scheduled for next Wednesday, I think it's Wednesday, the sixteenth, Peter, is that right? I think so, and then the bill, I think will move, I think it'll be a bipartisan vote and it'll move out to the Senate floor and then hopefully the House. I've already talked to the House Chairman, they're expecting it, so hopefully we can get this bill moving kind of quickly. From a funding perspective on things like the courthouse, et cetera, those are going to be end of session discussions. The first revenue forecast came out last week, I think I talked about it a little bit at the meeting a week ago. Revenue forecast was up significantly, not just up a little bit, up a lot. Five hundred million dollars more for the legislature to spend, the kicker's up to three point nine billion dollars, the by far the largest kicker ever. So I've read that the average, the median kicker refund will be close to a thousand dollars per household, that's the median. So a very large kicker, the budget will depend on the May forecast however, so. If the May forecast is up, lottery revenues are up, then that it bodes well for financial asks for things like the courthouse. But we won't know that until the middle, towards the end of May. So I think I'll stop there on the updates, you know, I continue to meet with the delegation, Gabe and I are walking around and talking to our legislators. They want to be helpful on our issues and turn to us and ask questions on a regular basis, so. I guess I'll stop there and we can dive into the report, I will say that from a legislative perspective. Several legislators left this morning to drive back over the pass. A couple of them left early, but as we were just talking about, the pass conditions are pretty. Pretty severe, so thick, heavy snow, so I wouldn't expect that we'll have too many people on starting at eight thirty, but we might have one or two jump on. Sorry to take so long, but lots going on.
Not a problem, so the Association of Oregon Counties has got that reception at our facility on Monday afternoon, Monday evening. So let's make sure to mention that to whoever can join us and welcome everybody in, so. AOC Day will have legislative meetings, bill positions and a reception, as I say, in the new building.
Sounds good.
So legislators to join at eight thirty, that was the idea?
Yeah, I'm not sure who, I know that Representative Crop has depositions this morning, Representative Levy is stuck in the past someplace. And I haven't heard back from our other three.
That's fine, okay, well, maybe this will be a half hour meeting today, then we'll see if somebody shows up at eight thirty, but let's get any other work done before that and then we'll see where it goes.
I'll go ahead and move through the bill report with new bills, Commissioner, if that works for you. I'm gonna start, we have a couple in the first pages of the report that are filed under BOCC and admin, but I'm gonna hit the bills that. Fall under departments first and come back to those central bills at the end if we have time. Page eight, community development, looks like we flag Senate Bill one thousand thirteen. With a proposed priority one, support with amendments, Peter, can you speak to that bill?
Yeah, thank you. This, this bill as presently written would allow, would mandate that all counties allow recreational. Vehicles in rural residential areas, I see it as an extraordinary opportunity to help address. Our housing challenges and matters even relating to code compliance. The reason why support with amendments is important is because RVs, you know, as everyone recognizes are not. Designed for permanent habitation, so. The amendment that I would, you know, offer would be, you know, there should, it should be temporary and that would be to be determined. But there also should be some siding standards relating to ensuring that the septic system can accommodate. Waste stream from an RV and then as we're looking outside with all the snow. You'd want to make sure that in certain areas of the county, there was a Ramada to. Protect snowfall from accumulating on an RV and impacting its integrity with that weight, so. Nick and I offline have been talking about some opportunities, commissioners. About maybe amending the code to address this type of opportunity, we should have that conversation at some point. Nonetheless, I think this, this bill, Senate Bill ten thirteen, is an extraordinary opening. To have these kinds of conversations, so. That's the overview that I would offer to everybody.
So Commissioner Dare and I both hear, you know, kind of the official set direction to this, but it sounds like I would support, you know, taking that. Support position and the amendments, you know, it is tricky when we live in a big snow load area or. We're trying to protect groundwater, we sure can't open the door wide open, but sure could be a great conversation. Commissioner Dare, you support this?
Wholeheartedly, thanks Peter for bringing this up. Yeah, apparently my mobile home, manufactured home bill isn't going to go anywhere unless Sherry Halt can pull a miracle for me. So anyway, whatever we can do to help with housing, we're definitely lacking and thank you Peter for bringing this to our attention.
And then Doug, are you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I watched the hearing on this bill, the, there was testimony. And testimony in the record that we might want to consider, and I know some counties are concerned about the fact that it mandates that counties must. Allow this, so it's a mandate on counties, so the suggestion was made and there may be an amendment forthcoming. That would allow counties to enact provisions to create this opportunity, so I think that was one of the issues. To shoots, Senator Paul Lipscomb was one of the people submitted testimony, I thought I'd point that out. The septic issue was raised in a discussion I had with someone from one of the other counties, so I think that is on the radar screen. And the genesis of the bill is Chair Tootie Smith from the Clackamas County Commission. Just so you know.
Well, yeah, I mean, it sounds like we'd be supportive of moving this forward, obviously some moving parts there, the proposal is a priority one. And, yeah, I mean, I guess. It's either gonna, you know, get some traction or flame out pretty quick, so I support this priority one to start with.
Thank you, as we move through, I'm gonna also kind of briefly pause as I see hearings coming up for bills that we're tracking. So page eleven of the report, it looks like House Bill twenty-seven fifty-seven has a hearing coming up this week. And I think Holly may have a few updates pertaining to that bill, so I'll turn it over to Holly.
Hi, everyone, yeah, with AOC MHP recently discussed this bill and it sounds like there's been some amendments. There's basically some concern that it won't stay at fifty cents, and it's likely to go down to forty cents. And at that amount, we're pretty unlikely to be able to receive any money from a CMHP at that, because that would pretty much be the cost to cover the call center. So there's also been some conversations with the city around this, cities around this bill, particularly Eugene. As they have the Kahoots model, which everybody has heard a lot about over the last couple of years. The way that model works, though, unfortunately, does not allow them to bill Medicaid. And so a lot of the work that's been done to get Medicaid increased match won't actually not apply to an entity like Kahoots because of the way it's just all structured. And so the cities have been working, trying to get amendments to this bill. It sounds like Representative Sanchez was not supportive of most of those amendments, but is requiring that cities have an MOU. With the CMHPs to make sure that there's good coordination if they choose to have their own mobile team, so lots of energy around this one. I think overall, we're not likely to see much revenue, the revenue forecast on this one is just still pretty unknown.
So bill number was two seven five seven, is that correct?
Correct.
So this is nine eight eight Suicide Prevention or Behavioral Health Crisis line. And we're taking a watch position, do you have any other suggestions or basically we're just seeing that there's a flurry of activity there at this time?
Mostly just a flurry of activity, I think we're, you know, like I said, the revenue at this point is likely not to really impact. The CMHPs in any real way, primarily gonna, if it's even passed, gonna cover cost of call center only.
Okay, and then Doug.
Yeah, the work session is on the dash two amendments on Monday, so it's coming up fairly quickly.
So would, would anybody be testifying or we're just following this, I mean, everybody? I'm taking, you know, Holly.
Oh, no, I'm not planning to testify. I'm sorry, don't.
Just making sure, we're all watching it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it looks like Senate Bill fifty-five twenty-five under Public Health also has some hearings coming up. Tom, just pausing there to see if there's any desire to engage in any of those processes before we move on to HR.
Which page is that?
Yeah, that is page sixteen, so this is, I think, the.
Oh, fifty-five twenty-five.
Yeah, sorry, did I transpose that?
Yeah, yeah, right now, that's the Oregon Health Authority budget and they're just having informational sessions about it because it's so complex. So I haven't tuned into those at this time, but we'll be ready to go when public health modernization comes up.
Perfect, moving into page seventeen, HR has a new bill flagged this week, House Bill twenty-two ninety-six.
Thank you, good morning commissioners, so we have, this bill came to my attention, it is. An adjustment to PERS essentially, so. A couple of years ago, there was Senate Bill ten forty-nine that was passed that made some significant provisions to, you know, our retirement system. And one of those was a temporary. Provision to the Work After Retirement program, so that is where. Someone could retire and then come back and work for a public employer. And it not impact their ability to continue to collect their benefits, and so they call that the Work After Retirement Provision. There's typically, PERS was originally set up to have hours, an hour limit on this. And what this Senate Bill ten forty-nine did was to essentially pause that, remove that hours limit for the majority of retirees. And this bill right now is looking to permanently make that. The, the rule and AOC reviewed this and they recommend a support but with an amendment. Which would just sort of extend this for five years and have this provision sunset. In twenty twenty-nine rather than permanently changing the rule. And HR supports with that amendment, I think that it could be, it would be pretty significant to make that that change permanent. How that impacts us is that essentially an employee could retire. Administratively continue to collect their PERS retirement and full salary with the county if they're working full time. What that does though with us is that we don't actually pay PERS into their PERS accounts. Or towards their retirement, it does go towards our unfunded liability, so you know, there's a little bit of a benefit there, but. It, I think at this point, it's just a little unknown as to the impacts of that. I'd be happy to ask or answer any questions on that one, I think we need to make a, determine if we want to make a, take a position on it.
I'm gonna just ask a question, Kathleen.
Yes.
Has that, I mean, I'm just thinking about our staffing crisis and I'm wondering whether or not you know whether that has made a difference. Being able to keep some employees with a lot of talent and wisdom longer. Has it helped with hiring, I mean, are there some benefits just from a staffing perspective?
Yeah, there are, and that's actually the reason why AOC is recommending the five years extension on it. Is specifically to address the current staffing issues related to it. We haven't seen a huge utilization of this provision. So other, there's a couple of other agencies, it's actually often, the biggest supporters of this actually are law enforcement. Because of that twenty-five year, being able to continue to work for a couple more years is a pretty nice benefit there. So, you know, we haven't seen a huge utilization of it ourselves. And in fact, some departments are a little cautious about using this benefit, because it does essentially allow someone to continue to work and collect both and. Whether or not that's the best, you know, for the county or not, we do have the option to use to re. To rehire them in that on-call status, and so we have some flexibility with how we can utilize the bill.
My follow-up question would be, sorry folks, we've, we've often brought people back af, well, on occasion after retirement on-call and there are significant costs to the department for that. Would this reduce that cost? A bit, no, still the same.
No, yeah, and I mean, that's one of the things, I would say the difference is, is that rather than, you know, we still have PERS costs that we pay on these, on these folks. It does go towards our unfunded liability rather than increasing someone's PERS pension once they've actually retired. So there's, there is a, you know, a benefit, I guess, to the county in that situation, but it doesn't reduce our costs. We still have, I suppose, we don't have to pay the six percent employer, employee match, that would be the reduction in cost there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the savings comes in, as she mentioned, partly. Through savings to law enforcement agency, for instance, the training cost of a new deputy or. Officer in a law enforcement agency is, is between seventeen and twenty-five thousand dollars statewide. So the advantage for the sheriff's office, for instance, and a few of the sheriff's groups are supporting this. Is that they would save the cost if someone retires after twenty-five years, decides to stay in, either like. The example Washington County gave is, I think, five of their jail employees. Are under this system and the cost of training five new employees for the jail would have been a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So they saved the training cost and the delay at DPSST. By being able to keep these people on board and right now, the delay to get a new officer trained up at DPSST is eight months or more. So even if you hire someone today, you're almost a year out, so that's one of the arguments that was made in favor of it and. AOC did testify on a Brawn, so their contract, the AOC asked for the five-year amendment, I've been told that they're very likely to adopt that.
So sunset in five years, that was the idea? Great, Commissioner Dare.
I know, this is my sister in Hermiston, Oregon, as far as school teachers go. She actually is working under this premise and she's been at the school the longest, she's been teacher of the year. Several times and I don't know anybody that doesn't work harder than my sister, she's really a joy to that school and thank goodness it's there. And if we can extend it five years, I think it's probably good and I hope Maureen actually can retire before five years. But she does a great job, so it's like, you know, when we need those people back, I think it's wonderful.
Well, let's keep an eye on this, it sounds like it could be a tool in the toolbox, used different ways by different apartments and there's benefits and. You know, I don't know really drawbacks, but there's benefits in there that we might be able to use in the future. So we'll leave it neutral for now, but you know, we could get engaged if there's something we need to support or oppose during the amendment process.
Sounds great, then just one tiny mention here is that there's about eleven bills around paid leave Oregon. That are in the works, but I'm really watching to see which ones end up moving forward or have any legs, there's not any that would. That are specific that I think that we should really push for or adjust, it's just watching as they, as we get closer to. Paid leave Oregon starting, they're really kind of trying to do some administrative cleanup and as. Bulleye said, harmonize our, this new paid leave with the existing leave protection. So I think just some things to kind of watch, if something does look like it'll have legs and move forward, we'll definitely add it here for a closer watch.
Great, thank you. Doug's. Doug, go ahead.
Yeah, I just thought as long as we're on this page, I'd mention another bill on the next page, Whitney, if that's okay.
Definitely.
Okay, the next page, I'll just give you a quick update, House Bill thirty-two oh five is the bill. To allow continued agencies to continue to pay retention bonuses, et cetera, to attract and retain workers. This was the bill that's responding to the bill to ban that practice a year ago. Deschutes County is one of, you know, several dozen organizations throughout the state that have lent logos to a letter. There's a hearing coming up on Monday, they have a packed witness list in support of the bill. And I'll keep you posted, but just an FYI, as long as we're in this realm.
Great, thank you.
And then moving to the last page of the report, page twenty-two, solid waste, House Bill thirty-two twenty-nine. Chad, I believe this is the bill that you spoke to briefly last week and I am. Not quite sure if we landed on a priority in position, but maybe you can refresh my memory there.
Sorry, good morning all, this bill's regarding changes to the fee structure for air quality permits. We have a Title V permit for not landfill and looking at the bill, the. The, the, the rate changes I'm looking for are modest, they don't, they don't appear to be problematic. But there's this rumor going around that it's going to increase fees by eighty percent. And I was in a board meeting with our trade organization earlier this week and a member of the legislative analyst for the Oregon Refugees and Recycling Association is on our board. They're looking at this from the solid waste perspective and I'm hoping to get something back from her in the next week or so. I'm thinking this eighty percent rumor is more directed at industrial dischargers rather than solid waste facilities like landfills. So I'm just going to continue to watch and hopefully Ora will give us some clarification on what the real impacts to our facilities will be.
Great, thank you.
So we'll plan, Jen, to finalize that, to watch, I think, on that bill and unhighlight it for next week.
Oh, yeah, okay, so.
If that works, Commissioner.
Yep, yeah, so we haven't taken position, that's good, to watch.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm moving back up to the start, oh, Doug.
Might help to turn off my mute, just one other update on, on a bill if we're at the end of the bill list. House Bill two thousand and one, I forget which page it's on, but that's the comprehensive housing homelessness bill that the governor asked for. Is scheduled this morning in the Ways and Means Committee for a work session, so that will, that bill will be moving. Just FYI.
Doug, then how fast would it go to the floor, would you expect?
I think very quickly, it would be put on the third reading list probably on Monday and then it just depends on how many bills are in front of it. Now, the complicating factor of that bill is if someone decides to demand that it be read in full, it will take quite a while, it's a pretty complicated bill. The other thing I mentioned about the bill is there are some technical errors in the drafting of the bill, there are statutory references in the bill that are incorrect. And rather than fix them, they were moving ahead with the bill because they didn't want to delay it. And the chair of the Housing Committee has promised local governments a technical fix bill at some point later in the session, so stay tuned on that.
Okay, and then just returning to the top few pages of the report, page three, staff flagged, House Bill twenty-two sixty-one as a to watch. That's a draft position mostly to get this in front of the board for some discussion. This is the bill that has to do with the video lottery transfer from the state to counties. And AOC is supportive of this bill and putting, I'm gonna put in the chat some testimony from AOC on this bill. But essentially, it has to do with sort of making sure that the full two point five percent is transferred to counties. And that it's trued up and down based on actuals, so I'll leave that there and we can certainly circle back with the board if this is something that you'd like to sort of. Learn more about outside of today's call or discuss it today.
So this has been, this request has been in place for many years, just like we heard from Edco the other day, basically. You know, the deal was economic development was the, the commitment when, back in the day, before my time. When gaming was brought to one, you know, the state level, local jurisdictions would have revenue for economic development, so. This is an AOC strong position, we've been asking for it forever, so I mean, I. I'd show support right now and. You know, I don't know that we need to go one because AOC will make it a high priority, but let's make sure we just take a position of support. Commissioner Dare.
What was that bill, Whitney, that bill number?
Twenty-two sixty-one.
Okay, and so do we need to do something to support it, is there a hearing that we can testify on or anything?
I don't see one listed in the next week or so, Doug, I don't know if you have any, it looks like you have a hand.
Yeah, the hearing was on. Tuesday night, I think, I sat in on the hearing, gambling is one of the committees that meets late, so they met from about five to six.
Did they meet in the meeting room? The gambling.
Yeah, exactly, they went to one of the casinos and had a meeting, no. No, they met in hearing room C or D, I guess it was, and the chair of the committee is John Lively from Eugene, it's only, it's only a five-member committee. The gambling committee had been a joint committee. Last session and during the interim, and now it's only a house committee, so the house committee heard this bill. Commissioner, Commissioners Cameron from Marion County and then a Commissioner from Umatilla County both testified on the bill. As well as a couple of individuals, but it wasn't, wasn't. as well as a couple individuals, but it it wasn't uh, wasn't widely attended. There was no opposition to the bill. And I would expect that they'd schedule a work session, but the hearing took place this week.
Great, thank you. So, yeah, let's uh two support, uh, and then we'll find out about it uh at AOC on Monday if they're really, you know, the, it it's, it'll be an AOC effort. Uh, and then, you know, Doug, you'll just know our position at this time. Thank you.
Sounds good. And then um, I think that staff on page six, page six is our last page of the bill report that has uh some bills that we believe are still impending status, but just wanting to check in with the board on the um two highlighted bills listed on page six. We discussed briefly last week, House Bill thirty three twenty one, which has to do with the community water systems. And Commissioner DeBonne, I know there was some discussion here. We have that as a draft to watch. Um, but I think wanting to make sure that that's indicative of the position that the board would like to adopt and to make sure that you'd like to continue to track this bill specifically.
Yeah, so it's interesting, uh, you know, the Oregon Association of Water Utilities had an annual meeting, and I was able to do an introductory statement uh at Sun River on Tuesday this week. So I made a relationship with their leadership and got to say hi to the membership that attended this conference. Uh, you know, I'm supportive of this. It's kind of outside of our domain primary as Deschutes County operations. Uh, but the app, in fact, uh, so it's Association of Water Utilities. And that's water and wastewater. They just don't call it both of those things. Uh, and if Terribon and Tumalo and OWW two and Lapine, they're all gonna be looking for the next generation of of uh operator, certified operators, uh, you know, I'm taking a support position on this bill. I'd uh, Commissioner Dare, do you think it's a a good focus for Deschutes County proper, I guess, is my question here?
Um, I'm happy to keep, to at least keep watching it as a two.
Uh, yeah, okay, that's fine. So we can keep it as a two. Doug, you hear what we're talking about here. Uh, we don't have wastewater and water operators. We do have the public health, public water systems, uh, folks in environmental health.
Yeah, the only thing I did.
Part of, so go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner, um, I sat in on the hearing and talked to some of the people from OAK. Um, I, the only thing I'd say is that there's a shortage of of trained skilled operators, and what's happening is that the larger jurisdictions are snagging the ones of the smaller jurisdictions. And right now, the trend is even out of state, uh, folks, uh, snagging our our operators. So at some point, even in the larger areas, it would be helpful to have kind of a continued train supply that get their kind of training wheels on and 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 work at the smaller utilities to kind of move up. Um, broad support for the bill. Um, the interesting thing about this bill is, and I like it, it allocates the money directly to OAK. So it doesn't run through a state agency with the long RFP process where the agency takes twenty or thirty percent of the money off the top to run an RFP process. It takes eighteen months. They utilize a mechanism that I think we need to utilize more, which is we trust our local partners by the experience. So OAK would establish a training center uh in Independence and begin to train operators and also board members. Uh, because board members have a a fiduciary responsibility uh and need some knowledge of of how the, how state and federal regulations govern their operations. So seems like a good bill.
Uh, Commissioner Dare, I mean, with that information, how can we take a support position, uh, knowing that a a number two support is just is letting the world know our position?
Sure, of course.
There we go. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and my last bill on this week's report, Commissioner Dare, is your bill, Senate Bill six seventy three. And I think we might still have this in draft status in terms of the board's position. So just wanting to circle back around on that, this bill, and um see if there's discussion about where we want this to land in terms of this report.
According to my seven AM conversation with um Doug, um Senator Golden is not going to um bring it forward at all. So the three hundred and thirty single-wide manufactured homes just north of the UGB off of Highway ninety seven, right next to where they wanna, uh, the other two commissioners really want to put in RV park is not gonna happen this year. So um, yeah, unless I run into the governor and I can talk her into it. So I haven't figured out a way to.
Well, yeah, and you're good at that, though.
I I'm working on it.
Yeah.
I haven't found anybody that could get me the right connection, but I will find him. So anyway, I know I'm really disappointed. Uh, it's, it's fifty seven acres. Oh, my God. And it's, you know, it's uh workforce housing for family housing for maybe nine hundred, you know, twelve hundred people. It's really sad.
Doug?
Yeah, I I'm the one who delivered the bad news to the Commissioner uh in my conversation with Senator Golden. Um, I will say this, I would say, uh, let us not give up hope. Um, and it's not over till it's over. Uh, you know, the um, I think the strategy from a Deschutes County perspective is is to get Senate Bill six forty four through this week. Um, and then we can, uh, if the Commissioners want us to um focus some more attention on this, you know, there are there are House committees that will have to look at Senate bills. There are Senate committees that will have to look at Senate bills. There are gonna be omnibus bills on housing. So um, I'd I'd say let's, you know, keep this on the radar screen, and um, and we'll keep working on it behind the scenes. Um, I I think with Senator Golden's um committee, there are so many bills. I mean, there are a hundred and I think he has a hundred and eighty seven bills or a hundred and eighty eight bills in this committee. And so my sense is that he really hadn't had a chance to focus on this at all until we brought it to his attention about a week and a half ago. So uh, don't give up complete hope, but for now, it does appear that it won't get a hearing before the the hearing deadline.
Well, and the idea may be uh be able to intermix with some other efforts. I mean, it's obvious that uh we need housing. There's talk of manufactured and uh uh assembly, construction of 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 homes and home modules. So uh, you know, this this, it could come together big time.
Okay, I think that rounds out this week's bill report. I'll um kind of pause and see if there's any other department updates or anything that we'd like to get before the board this morning.
So are there any legislators with us? Looks like everybody's probably going slow down the highway trying to get out of Dodge, maybe.
Yeah, I see Andy with Representative Krup's office. Andy, anything you want to share with us? Updates or questions you might have?
Okay, well, he can step in if he needs to, or if he's available to do. It's just, anybody else?
Can you guys hear me? Sorry, having a little trouble getting it off mute. I don't have any questions, Doug. Thank you for letting me uh sit in and keep up with these issues.
Great, thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, well, so here, nothing else. Uh, you know, just a big picture. Uh, in fact, this is for Doug and whoever's here. And I mean, City of Ben's asking the county to do something about a homeless manufact- or homeless uh uh managed camp in the city, and uh media was all over it this week. Um, state legislature's putting out a um, you know, a bill with some money in it, so there's a lot of activity around that. Department of State lands, uh, Vicky uh Walker sent us a letter saying, well, you guys just go clean up the land that you want to swap with us, and we're gonna, the state's gonna do this big funding package, so that's gonna help. So uh, I really do feel there's just a a cultural disconnect between leadership and implementation on this right now. I sure would like for, uh, as I say, I would think it traces all the way back to the governor. I mean, Governor Kotek may just need to give give us all direction so we can maybe move in the same direction. Because uh, I mean, this emergency order and bill isn't given, it it's it's an end state, but there's a whole bunch in the middle between getting from here to there that are up in the air right now. So I'm just sharing, you know, with whoever's on this call that uh, yeah, it's just moving parts everywhere on this right now. Okay, anything else?
Uh, Commissioner, if you have anything in writing on the AOC reception and the AOC day on Monday, send it my way. I haven't seen that.
Sure, okay, I will.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day, everybody. Go get your snow shovels out.
Thanks. Great weekend.